I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the freedom and right of the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to call the Exeter Town Council Regular Meeting Monday, June 4th, 2018. We're not used to having a mic. Okay, I'm going to call the Exeter Town Council Regular Meeting to order for Monday, June 4th, 2018. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Kevin McGovern is absent. Dan Patterson?
Here.
Cal Ellis?
Here.
Frank Mark?
Here.
Ray Morrison?
Here.
Next up is Public Comment. There is a public comment. She's separate from the public hearing.
Thanks, Patty.
The first individual is Lauren Thurn.
Lauren Thurn, Gotten Road in Exeter. I've noticed again tonight in the sign-up, you've had a sign-up be either pro or con. I believe this is a great way to get a feel for what the backing either pro or con is. If it has run the same as last two months ago, one side gets a decided advantage or disadvantage, one side gets to make statements, the other side knows what they are, and can rebut, where the other side has no opportunity to rebut anything that might be felt as misinformation. I ask you gentlemen to please consider intermixing both the pro and the con together tonight. Thank you.
Next is Ted Natale.
I was going to put my timer on, but I won't bother. This is, I have a copy of this that I have given to Lynn and asked her to put it in as a letter for next month's meeting. This is just a brief one. I've asked at least five occasions the status of the comprehensive plan. I never received an answer. At the last financial town meeting, I asked the following question of President McGovern. His response was, "It was work in process." It was President McGovern who stated that when it was decided that the town plan would be paid ninety dollars an hour to do the project, that he would monitor the project. I have questions. My questions have been asked five times at least. How much have we played the planner to date? What is the progress she has reported to the council? Based on her progress, how long will it take to complete the project? What is the estimated cost to complete the project based on the current cost and current time? I feel that this information is important for the taxpayers to receive at the next financial meeting to make an intelligent decision on the fate of the comprehensive plan. Thank you for your cooperation. This is ridiculous. We don't know what goes on. We don't know what she's done. We have no idea whatsoever. We don't know, she had, her hours during the day are not documented. The town council feels that's not proper. Her hours of this thing, this project, are not documented. I don't know how they're documented. We have, we have no idea. This thing could drag on to thirty-five, forty thousand dollars. In the beginning, the bid that was put in there was put in, and all of a sudden it was pulled out, and the council decided, "Oh, we're not going to do that," which I think was against the law, but anyway. They turned around and they decided to pay her ninety dollars an hour. Mr. McGovern stated that he would monitor the situation. I've asked the town council, I begged the town council, "When we get to the next financial town meeting, tell us. This is what it's cost us, this is how far we're going, and how far are we going to go to cost us?" Thank you.
Next up is Acknowledgements and Announcements. The first thing is congratulations to the Exeter West Greenwich Senior High School graduates. The commencement services are this Saturday, June 9th, at the U.R. Ryan Center in West Kingston at one o'clock. And I know there's a few people here in the crowd, including me. Our kids are graduating Saturday, so.
Congratulations, Dan, and to everybody else who's children are making it through the system.
Calvin, do you have a few things you want to add?
Ray, you want to speak?
Well, our public service director, Stevie P. Matczek, has won an award from the American Public Works Association, the Meditative Service Award for Driver Skills and Safety Training. And on it says, "In recognition of your valuable contributions to education supporting public work services." This is what it looks like. Steve has been teaching snow plowing operations and winter driving for the Rhode Island Public Works Association and the New England chapter of the American Public Works Association. So congratulations to Steve.
And I'd just like to say a word about the parade, which unfortunately was rained upon. I did not get a chance to see it as I was out of town, but from what I understand, despite the rain, it was a very good parade. And I just want to thank the parade committee, which unfortunately has dwindled due to moving out of town on one part, and unfortunately, the death of another long-term member, Mary Lutteff. So to Lynn Hawkins, our town clerk, who seems to keep stepping up to the plate in so many ways, I just want to say thank you. And to appeal to any of you who would like to participate in that kind of activity, just see Lynn or someone at the town who will pass your name along. Help these people if you'd like to see the parade continue. Please, please step up and help them do that. Thanks.
Next up is Approval of the Agenda Order. Anybody want to make any changes? Okay.
I move to approve.
Second. A second. All in favor?
Aye.
I suppose. Consent Agenda. Any of the reports? Communications. Anybody want to pull Communication? Cal?
I had four, eight, ten, eighteen, and thirty-four.
Frank?
Number thirty-one and number thirty-two, Mr. President.
Ray?
Twenty-four. President.
Does anybody have to recuse themselves for meeting minutes? No? Okay, Ray, Ray, you have to recuse yourself for number four. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's see, then we need to do the vote on number four separately?
Yeah. I move to approve the work session meeting minutes of May 31st. I just moved to approve work session, work session minutes of May 31st.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number seven, vacancies. Okay. Number seven, vacancies and appointments. Personnel Board members? Conservation Commission?
Nothing.
Economic Development Commission. Board of Canvassers alternate member, was that position filled?
We still have one.
We still looking for one? Okay. Resignations? We do have one resignation under Board of Tax and Assessment Review. And trying to find the gentleman's name here so I get it right. And Jerome Sidio will be resigning. I imagine, from what I understand, he's moving out of town, so we will be posting that position.
We already have posted that position.
We already have, okay.
I move that we continue to post.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next up is Memorial Day Parade Committee Members. Do you want to speak to that, Lynn?
We haven't received any letters of interest from that. Continue to post.
What's that?
Can we continue to post?
Oh, yeah. We're going to continue to post this. I'm sure the more the merrier over here. Lynn and them need a lot of help to put this on, and if we can't get the help, it's in danger of not happening next year. I'll make a motion to continue to post for the Memorial Day Parade Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Board of Canvassers alternate member ensuing three-year term.
I wrote the chair of the Democratic Committee, and I have yet to hear from him.
Okay.
For recommendation.
Okay. Board of Tax and Assessment Review alternate member. We did post for that one also, correct?
Yeah, we just appear that.
Okay. I'll make a motion to continue to post Board of Tax and Assessment Review alternate member.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up is expiring terms. The first one is Michael D. Francisco, Planning Board Member, term expiring July 19th, 2018. I would imagine, send a letter to Michael and see if he would be interested in continuing. If not, we can post.
All four of them.
What's that?
All four of them.
Okay. Number two, Susan Littlefield, Planning Board Member, term expiring July 2018. Same thing. Number three, Pamela Toro, Zoning Board of Review Member, term expiring July 2018. And the fourth one is Timothy Robertson, Zoning Board of Review, alternate member, term expiring July 2018. I would like to tell the audience out there, if anybody is interested in any of these positions, you're more than welcome to send in a letter of interest to the council. And you would need that roughly a week before the next council meeting, Lynn, so. Next up, the Notice of Intent to Retire. T. Morton Curry III has given us notice that he's going to retire. I believe it was June 29th is his last day. I don't know if Morton's here. I'd like to thank him for his years of service.
Go ahead. I got a note from Steve Matczek, the Director of Public Works, who cannot make it tonight. And he had said that Morton Curry had been an exceptional employee, and he wishes him well on his retirement.
I'll need a motion to post a notice that the town of Exeter is looking for a public works employee to direct Steve Matczek to write the specifics for the job description.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Number eight is continuation of a public hearing that was heard in April here. Now, let me read this off. Continued amended proposal to amend Exeter Code of Ordinances as submitted by Green Development LLC. Zoning Appendix A, Article II, Zoning District Use Regulations, Section 2.4, Zoning Use Table, Section 2.4.1.69, Use Category, and Revision of Section 11.1 Solar Utility Scale Solar Photovoltaic Facility. I guess we need a motion to open the continued public hearing.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What I'm going to do is I'm going to have the town planner come up and give a description of this proposed amendment, let her give her story, and then we're going to have the applicant come up and give a presentation. And then when they're both done, we'll take, we have the sign-in sheets, one's opposed, one's opposed. We'll take the people one at a time. It is a three-minute limit on public comment. If you've heard your point being get across, you know, someone said it two or three times. You know, we've got quite a few people here to hear. There's probably over a good hour, hour and a half of testimony between the two. If you just be a little bit courteous and just, if your point's been made, just let the next person speak.
Dan, just a point of order, please. You spoke, you spoke about three minutes, and we do this with our public comment. I understand that you want to move this process along, but there are people here that may have more to say than would take three minutes. And sometimes what happens, Dan, and I just want the public to know, if someone's speaking and they're cut off, but you're next, and you say, "I want to give my time to the person who was speaking," even if it's back and forth, I think we need to be able to do that if you're listening to someone and you want to hear what they have to say. I'm just concerned about cutting off three minutes for some people that may have more to say than others. And Dan, would you just explain as a point of information how this is going to go, and it's going to be back and forth and so forth?
We'll take the first, first in on this one, support, let them speak. The next speaker, we'll take from the opposed. We're going to go back and forth. If Ashley's here?
I'm just going to quickly give you an overview of the applicant's proposal and then a quick overview of the planning board's advisory opinion that was submitted to the council for consideration. The applicant is proposing at this time to identify fifteen lots that they have inserted at the end of the use table, which is Section 2.4.1 of the zoning ordinance. Those lots are identified by MAP and Lot, and those lots would not require a special use permit in an RU3 and an RU4 district. Any lot that's not listed as one of those fifteen lots that's in town, that is in either an RU3 or an RU4 district, would be required to obtain a special use permit per the zoning ordinance. In addition to that proposal, they are proposing to amend the solar ordinance. The planning board did an overview or review of the proposed amendments, and from what I can tell, it appears that a majority of the amendments proposed are from Draft One or Draft Two of the planning board's solar proposal. We are now on Draft Eight. And with, with the addition of an item that exempts solar panels from lot coverage, which is different than the current status that was decided by the zoning board in 2015. The planning board submitted a nineteen-page advisory opinion to you. I don't know how much detail you want me to go in. They've raised several concerns with the proposal. They are not, they are not lawyers, but they do see some flaws in the zoning amendment that's presented. They have some concerns with the legality of what's being proposed. They have made the statement that they don't feel that the application is consistent with the comprehensive plan. They don't feel that the application is consistent with the zoning ordinance, and they feel that it is in general in bad planning practice to decide land use with special exceptions in this way in the zoning ordinance.
Ashley, are you asking that the advisory opinion be made an exhibit to the hearing?
Yes, please.
If you have a copy, would you?
Can I give you this? Can I keep this copy and give it to you at the end? Is that okay? I only have one copy with me.
Get up, Ma.
Okay.
Jim, repeat what you said. You can't hear it back here.
What I said, Ted?
Yes, please.
I just simply asked the planner whether or not she was making the advisory opinion an exhibit to this hearing, and she answered yes.
Can we speak to this as we move forward?
Thank you for having any questions, yes.
Well, I'd only like to say that I was going to ask for that to happen, that this nineteen-page advisory opinion be made part of the record of tonight's hearing, which, which, thank you, Jim, for doing that. And I'd just like to say that this is, this process is required not only by our local statute, but by state statute, that when a zoning, when a request for a zoning amendment or an amendment to our zoning ordinance is presented, we're required by law to pass it to the planning board, and they are required to come back to us with an advisory opinion, which they have done. And the summary, which we can address now or later, indicates that they advise that this is not an appropriate amendment to our zoning ordinance. And I just think that needs to be set for the record. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ashley?
Not yet.
Next up, I'd like to have the applicant step forward. Just state your name for the record, please.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, John Miancini, my attorney. I represent Green Development, and Green Development is the petitioner who's filed with the town a request to amend your existing zoning ordinance, which is specifically 11.1 that deals with solar. At the last hearing that we were here, we had presented an ordinance and made some changes to it, and it was advised that we go through the process with the planning board so as to allow more of a transparent process and allow more venting of the ordinance to take place. Since that time, we have submitted to both the planning board as well as the town a revision to the entire ordinance of Section 11.1. And there's a couple of things that are important and that need to be placed essentially on the record and noted. One is that we're not proposing a zone change. This is essentially a text change. You have an existing ordinance on the record, if you will, or part of your zoning ordinances, and that's, that's Section 11.1. And Section 11.1 specifically governs and provides for a process as to how the town of Exeter approves a solar array project. What we have done is we have incorporated certain changes and revisions which have been debated, if you will, since December. There have been a multitude of different versions of amendments to Section 11.1. Not only has the applicant chimed in, if you will, on those amendments, but the planning board has also made certain recommendations, and the town council has as well. I think that the process has been duly vented, if you will, since December of 2017, where there's been multitude of workshop sessions going back and forth between the council and the planning board, and we think that's an excellent process, and we've been, I guess we've been an active participant in that process. So what I want to do this evening is I want to introduce Michelle Cochran, who's from Green Development. She's going to quickly walk through the changes of the ordinance. And then I have Joe Lombardo, who is an expert in land use. He's been a past town planner, both in West Hurley, has also served some time here in Exeter, and have him give you his opinion in regards to the consistency of the comprehensive plan. Importantly, the ordinance which has been submitted, the text amendment, if you will, has been submitted pursuant to Round General Laws 442551, which governs the process for an adoption and amendment to the zoning ordinance. In addition to 51, there is also 452452 and 452453, which delineate and define the process by which the town council is to review an ordinance. Normally, the town council has the authority to vote on amendment of, of an ordinance, whether it be a zone change or a text amendment. In this instance, it's a text amendment because it's amending existing ordinance. What the town council did is it submitted our proposal to the planning board. Planning board provided an extensive review of the ordinance on its May 29th, 2018 meeting. As you just heard from your town planner, that has been submitted, and it's now part of the record. A couple of points with regards to the planning board's recommendation, and we'll go into it further with Mr. Lombardo. The, the planning board's role is clearly defined within 452452. And 452452 says that when the town council receives a proposal for an amendment to the existing zoning ordinance or a new ordinance that affects zoning, it has to refer it to the planning board. And the planning board's role is twofold. One is it has to make a determination as to whether or not the, the proposed amendment or the new ordinance, if you will, is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And we say make a determination, but the ordinance is very, I'm sorry, the state statute is very specific. It's an advisory, it's an advisory opinion, and it's a recommendation to this body. Secondly, it has to find that the ordinance itself is compatible and compliant with the rest of your zoning code. There has to be continuity, if you will, and consistency with regards to the new proposed ordinance as it rests with your entire code of ordinances. Planning board in this instance has found that the ordinance is in fact inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, and we take issue with that. And Mr. Lombardo is going to further elaborate us to our basis as to why we take issue with the fact that the planning board determines that your existing 11.1 solar ordinance is inconsistent. The ordinance already exists. The consistency has already been determined at the first instance when the ordinance was adopted. I think the focus is really not on the changes of the text that we've made with regards to some comments with regards to screening, with regards to lot coverage, but the focus is on the table of uses, which is an addendum to your existing 11.1. So 11.1 has certain table of uses identified in it, and it permits and decides in what zoning classifications a solar array can be permitted by right, prohibited without any exception, or permitted by special use permit. The ordinance that the applicant has proposed permits solar array to be a permissible use by right in the RU3 zone and the RU4 zone. That is distinctly different than what currently exists because in the RU3 zone currently, it's only permitted by special use permit, and the RU4 zone, it's not permitted at all. So what the applicant is promoting and providing in this amendment is to allow for solar array to exist in both the RU3 zone and the RU4 zone. And there, and really, I think that's where the debate kind of narrows down. And the issue is, do you allow solar array in residential areas? We've heard clearly and very loudly, I should say, from the planning board in their nineteen-page recommendation, that it is their position that providing solar array in a residential area is simply and specifically inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. And again, as Mr. Lombardo is going to note, we take exception with that because the zoning code as it exists now, 11.1, already provides for solar arrays to exist as a special use permit. And a special use is essentially a permitted use with certain conditions, and therefore it's determined to be a conditional use. So it's already, it already exists in your zoning code, so it's already been determined to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. What we've done, and what we're proposing, is to essentially codify some additional comments that have been circulating with regards to solar array in the 11.1, and then look at RU3 and RU4 and say that it should be permissible, that those who have large tracts of land, whether they be agricultural tracts or simply residential tracts, should be permitted to allow for solar array. Now, what we've not done is we haven't changed the process. The process is defined in 11.1 is that any solar array project would have to be a major land development project. Major land development project is specifically codified both in your subdivision regulations as well as state statute. And a major land development project requires a master plan review, a preliminary plan review, and a final plan review. And it incorporates two public hearings. That has not changed. So the process is still what 11.1 contemplated in the first instance. What has changed is that in the RU3 and the RU4, there's no requirement to obtain any type of special use ordinance, a zone change, or a use variance. So those are important in distinct terms, but it's all in context with your existing statutory and zoning ordinance codification for approval of some regional land development project, and it's also consistent with the comprehensive plan. So with that, Mr. President, if you will allow me, I would like to have Ms. Cochran speak to the ordinance and speak a little about Green Development, speak about what we're proposing. And then I'd like to have Mr. Lombardo kind of go through very quickly the position that we take with regards to the planning board's recommendation. And I think that's important because I think you should have an opportunity to review both what the statutory obligation of the, of the planning board role is, as well as what other planners could say about it. So it's not, it's not something, it's certainly not a decision that should be made in a vacuum. So we want to go through that process. And throughout the process, will be available any questions that the council members may have.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you. So thank you, Mr. President. I'll have Ms. Cochran do it. Our goal is to try to be as concise as possible because I know that we have a lot of people who wish to speak.
If you could, I would, I'd let the audience see it, you know, because I know people on that side are going to be saying something too.
So what do you want to say, Joe?
I would turn it more for the people to see, yeah.
Huh? Turn it to the audience. The whole, fully?
Yeah, I was going to say, not the whole way, just turn it a little bit more for them, you know?
So that the council can see it as well, as much as you can.
Yeah.
So, Mr. President, I just wanted to make one clarification, and my mind flipped the two around. So currently, in an RU3, it's not permitted. It requires a special use permit. In an RU4, it's permitted. So I had the two reversed, so my delusion was coming into play. So, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. So I wanted to start with a little bit in terms of an overview on Green Development, go into the ordinance itself specifically, and then go into the development benefits, which include on community benefits, environmental benefits, and financial benefits. So Green Development is a renewable energy company. We develop wind, we develop solar, we do battery storage. We're a vertically integrated company that's focused on developing all different types of renewable energy. When we do that, we try to take a sustainable approach, which involves engaging communities, trying to work collaboratively with those communities. We, when we focus on these projects, specifically solar energy systems, you know, we're looking at how can we make these sustainable energy systems more sustainable within the community? How can we, you know, incorporate environmentally smart design into them? You know, wildlife-friendly fencing, low-growth pollinator-friendly habitat, other things like that. So we are focused on renewable energy, but we are also focused on developing those projects smartly. In terms of the company, we're the largest renewable energy company in terms of deployed megawatts in the state of Rhode Island. We have over 26 megawatts, and we've been in business since 2009. In terms of the ordinance amendments that are here in front of you, John touched on them, but I want to touch on a few specifics. As we mentioned, a lot of it was cleanup, some of it was incorporated from the town council's ordinance itself. So the biggest one really was, as Ashley mentioned, you know, cleaning up the lot coverage. We did it to mirror the RIDM definition, Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, definition of lot coverage, in which they view it if it's impervious structures and it's not subject to lot, sorry, impervious, it's subject to lot coverage. If it's not impervious, then it is not subject to lot coverage. And that was not something that was previously incorporated into the ordinance, so it was one area where it was a little bit vague and it had to reference other sections of the town's codes. The other thing that was in there was buffering. Previously, it was required everywhere except highways. We modified that to require buffering from public rights of way as well as neighboring residential properties because we thought that was an important characteristic. And then the other item we did is we clarified when in the process different items in the major land development process are required. It was a little bit ambiguous how it was structured before, so you didn't know when you needed certain surveys, certain studies, and things like that. So that was, that was really it. The other piece was 11.1B, which was the residential component, and in that, we really only modified that there is a requirement that wire runs from residential homes to ground-mounted solar energy systems be done underground, which is how they're typically done anyways, but just put that in code so there wouldn't be overhead lines running there. And then we added a requirement for site plan and equipment specification as part of either the special use or building permit application process. So those are really the changes that are anything more than just minor clarifications and, you know, grammatical changes. The other item that's part of that was the revisions that Ashley mentioned to the zoning use table. So this map over here actually shows all of the RU3 and RU4 properties that were listed specifically as being exempt from a special use permit. So the yellow is RU3 and the red is RU4. The thing that is important to note about those projects is that, as John mentioned, they do still require going through the major land development process. That is a minimum of a four-meeting approval process at the planning board. It requires public notice at two of those steps, and, you know, they have oversight over the project through that entire process. So it's important to note that this does not, you know, take away the town's right to regulate these projects. That process stays in place, and they still have to follow, and we still have to follow it. You know, it just removes the special use permit with the zoning board from that process. So one of the items that was called out as specifically concerning in our discussions with the planning board was visual buffering of the solar energy systems. You know, Exeter has rural character, and the idea was to maintain that. So what we're showing over here is an idea behind how we had thought about the vegetated buffer and how we would approach a vegetated buffer. In the ordinance, that is one of the other changes, is it does actually require a landscape architect to stamp these plans and to come up with a buffering plan for each project. And that was done to, specifically to preserve the rural character of Exeter and make sure that any arrays are, you know, buffered in a way that is not disruptive to any of the neighbors. So the next picture is just a view of before of one of the lots that's included in this, and then you can flip to the after. And the after is our visual representation of what we anticipate the view should would change from the public right of way. In terms of local economic benefits, there's significant benefits to the community. I'll touch separately on some of the benefits to the town associated with these renewable energy projects. Over 25 years, the proposed projects that we're talking about here would create roughly $41 million in lease payments. That would also equate to the creation of roughly 300 jobs for roughly a year. Our plan was to hold a job fair in Exeter to try and make as many of those jobs, jobs for Exeter as possible. We've done this recently in other towns, and we've made similar commitments. Our goal is to hire local. We are a local company ourselves. All of us live here, so, you know, that is, that is important to us. The other thing that it's important to note is that there's no added traffic noise or pollution from renewable energy. You know, for all intents and purposes, these solar projects get installed, and then they stay there for the duration, and you don't see them, you don't hear them. They're not a nuisance in any way. There's no added strain on fire, police, or school systems, so, you know, they are, they are, again, completely benign. And then the use of the town's land, it's less than 1% of the town's land, the projects that we're proposing. In terms of specific financial benefits that we've proposed to the town, the annual tax payments are codified by state law. They mandate $5,000 per megawatt AC. We've made recent commitments to other towns, and we've agreed to go above and beyond that. We've executed tax treaties with Johnston for wind projects being installed up there, and we are shortly intending to execute one with North Surfield for a project that recently had some, is starting the process there. So we're agreeing to 20% more than what the state requires. The annual revenue for that would roughly $472,000 a year in tax payments, and that would start as soon as the projects go commercially operational. So realistically, you know, that is roughly 12 to 24 months from the date something like this goes forward. In addition to that, we've also agreed to offer one-time upfront incentive, development incentives to the town of $5,000 per megawatt AC. That translates to roughly $337,000 for the 67.5 megawatts. And again, it's worth noting, you know, we're assuming 67.5 megawatts right now. We would have to go through these parcels, and we would have to, you know, delineate wetlands, make sure we were complying with appropriate setbacks, so the project sizes, you know, are subject to change depending on site specifics. That $337,000 would be used at the town's discretion, and our plan would be to pay that prior to issuance of the building permit. The other thing that it's worth noting is the avoided town expenditures associated with this. We, we looked at 67.5 megawatts, assuming the rough equivalent acreage for that was developable, and that translated to roughly 74 residential lots. Assuming 0.9 children per household, you get to 63 children, and we assumed a cost of $16,000 per student, which translates to 1.1 million per year in avoided school costs and 27 million over 25 years. So, you know, beyond just generating tax revenue, it does potentially also save from alternative developments of these projects. So with that, you know, our key takeaway is that the ordinance revisions are mostly minor tweaks to an existing ordinance that wasn't passed that long ago. The planning board will maintain significant oversight over these projects, and there's over $50 million in local economic benefit between payments to the town and payments to local landowners, which includes more than $12 million to the town over 25 years. This is, this helps landowners, it helps farmers, it helps those that, you know, want to preserve land from more permanent developments such as conversion to residential subdivision or other things. You know, it essentially allows the discussion about what happens to the land permanently to shift into the future through this temporary use. And then it supports the rural character of Exeter. So, you know, we think, we think with appropriate buffering that, you know, this is, this is a really good use for the town. And with that, you know, we'll turn it over to Joe and answering any questions that may have as well.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, excuse me, I do. My question is, with the original 129, somehow we've cherry picked 15, and what do we say to the 114 other property owners that are part of this process? Because you've indicated that there's no requirement for the special use permit for those 15 specially selected parcels. So to 114 other people or parties who own property, we tell them the old rules apply, but these 15 have become some special, they've been given a special package by your development firm? I'm confused by it. I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand the fairness of this. We have a zoning ordinance, it's supposed to apply, apply to the entire community. I'm intrigued by this, and I'm, and I'm questioned by it frankly.
Yeah, absolutely. No, that's a good question. So the original idea behind narrowing it was specifically because of the concern of the large number of lots that it affected and the concerns raised by the planning board and the planner associated with that. So we basically took their feedback, and we tried to reduce the number of lots that it was applicable to.
If I may add to that, the, really, the, when we started the process, when we were at the planning board, you know, the 129 lots was the overall universe, if you will. But the actuality and the reality of the situation is that not all those lots are feasible because of certain unique constraints, most importantly of which is either wetlands or proximity to the, proximity to the interconnection. So a project is only going to be viable if it's feasible, and as a result of that, the ultimate intent of the ordinance is to ensure that the lots that have been chosen are those that are viable. So there's not a magic wand that has been waved to specifically create a second class of lots versus a first class of lots. What we've done is we've, we've already delineated which lots are viable and which lots would not be viable. For anybody who wishes to go forward throughout the town, there's still that process. And in conjunction with the process of getting a special use permit, a major land development approval, is a determination of RIDM, whether you're complying with wetlands, also obtaining a REPTI's permit to make sure that you can properly remove and deal with spill water, and then finally, getting an interconnection agreement, which is the supreme, most important element. Because without the interconnection, there simply is no project, and interconnection can be very expensive. So if the interconnection is not feasible to the other lots, then the creation and going through that process is simply not going to take place. So I don't want to leave you with the impression that there's been some, that these lots were half-assedly picked, but rather, they were picked by a transparent process that started with your planning board. And the planning board actually requesting and asking, you know, why, what, which, what's actually feasible? Are you actually going to intend on developing 129 lots? And the bottom line is, we could not even if we wanted to.
Yeah, I got one more question. And originally, back in, I believe, when did yours first come before us? October, November?
Yeah, yeah, seems like, seems like a long time.
Because I know the first presentation you showed us, they didn't show it in this one. Your, your client is building the infrastructure down Route 102.
Correct, correct. Yeah, that's, that's important. So, so the process, the process started back in October, and it started even beyond that because there were individual submissions that were, that were placed. But importantly to note, that infrastructure does not exist currently and would need to be put in place, which is what the development would call for. But what is in place is the Lafayette substation, and that's a key component of the entire process because without that, we simply don't have, you know, it's like, we need two things. We need a lot of sun, and we need an interconnection agreement. I need an interconnect, well, we need an interconnection agreement, but we need an interconnection substation, and that's essentially there. Michelle can speak more to that.
Yeah, no, I think John hit most of it. That's important. We intend to build infrastructure to serve the projects, and the farther you go away from that infrastructure, the less viable the projects are.
Thank you.
So if there's, if there's no further, if there's no further questions of Michelle, then I'd like to ask Mr. Lombardo to kind of give a little bit of overview as to his review of the planning board's recommendation.
Any questions? Over your head. Thanks, John. Good evening, members of the council. For the record, my name is Joseph Lombardo, planning consultant. As you know, before you, several weeks ago on this application, a couple of things I wanted to mention at the beginning is, while it may not have been known to the council and the public on that night, I was aware of this, these recommendations, these changes of the ordinance right before we came to this meeting. So my comments that I made to you some time back, several weeks ago, were based on seeing these revisions with the less number of lots and properties and these changes. So I had, I had the benefit of seeing that before, so it doesn't, I'm not changing any opinions tonight based on that because that is what I was actually looking at. And a couple of things. I was pointing out that this is a text amendment, not a zone change. Obviously, the difference is, is one of words in the ordinance versus a map change, and that's important to understand the difference between those two. The, and I would applaud the planning board for doing what I would consider a very thorough job of looking at the existing comprehensive plan and making the recommendations to you to consider with this. But what I, what I had spoken to you in the past, I just would like to reiterate a couple of those points. And it really revolves around the state guide plan, the Element Energy 2035. And the points that I made to you before, I feel pretty strongly about them, and I think a lot of that relates to the fact that you're in the process of updating your plan. I understand that. And there's many communities that are in the process of doing that, and that is required by law to do it every, every so many years. And so when you, when you look at it today, 2018, and we know the process is underway, I'm fairly confident that if it's Ashley that's doing your work for you, she'll have to consider this state guide plan element because it's a newer element from when the last time the plan was adopted. And you would incorporate many of the items in the state guide plan element in your new comprehensive plan that will come before the council. So I think that's important to understand that. And then related to that, really, as Mr. Mancini pointed out, the application that came before you in 2015 to amend the ordinance to include solar was adopted. You adopted that, I would assume, in, in conformance with your comprehensive plan at the time and with your zoning ordinance, otherwise I don't think you would have adopted it. So when I look at these points that the state guide plan makes, you're, you're actually on target with that. It says to adopt zoning and siting standards for renewable energy projects. It provides a predictability for property owners, companies who want to develop them, and for the town. So that's a, that's one of the strategies in the guide plan element. It also talks about using an expedited application and permit process for renewable energy facilities. I think we know that the governor and the state has, has come out with, with a plan here to try to get more renewable energy into our system here, be it wind and be it solar. So we're seeing that everywhere. We're seeing what's, what's, in my opinion, is a new thing. We're seeing what's, what's, in my opinion, is a new thing. When, I don't have the date of your comprehensive plan, when it was written, that you're being updated, but many of these things were probably not considered now. Certainly not to the extent that this guide plan element indicates. But that process, and it's been, it's been reiterated to you twice already, first two speakers, the land development process is a regulation that's in place from state law. The process is, is through the planning board, you're doing very thorough reviews with, with the four steps that have been mentioned. The two key ones, a master plan and preliminary with our public hearings being held, noticed, and I would assume you'd probably have, you know, good representation from your public at those meetings. So that's, that's important. So when you look at, when you look at it, I made those opinions about being in compliance with the plan, it's more, it's more in line with looking at overall that you adopted an ordinance, you made the choice in 2015 that we want to regulate these larger solar array facilities. We want to put the regulations in place to, to be able to regulate them, which you did. And what you have in front of you tonight is a revision to that ordinance that was passed in 2015 that does a number of things in addition to specifying lots, but it clarifies items, it, it makes improvements to certain statements there, it provides definitions, and a couple of the most important things it provides for landscaping provision. And I think, as we all drive around South County, I live, you know, ten minutes down the road in Hopkinsville, we, when these facilities are being built, many people really don't want to see them in some instances. They don't mind them because they're quiet, they don't do anything, but they, they really don't want to see them. So the most important thing that a planning board, going through its master plan and preliminary approvals, can do is require very specific landscaping standards. Those can be done, you know, graphically with a computer, and then, and then in the field, supplementing existing vegetation. I'm working on a similar project in Hopkinsville right now where, where they're, they're doing an extensive amount of landscaping and buffering, so that you, when you're driving down those country roads, you won't see them. And so I think that's a critical part of it. And again, that's all, that's in this update and this amendment that's before you tonight. So I think when you look at those aspects of it, the fact that it's in place and you're adopted it with your comprehensive plan in mind, with your zoning ordinance in mind, and making proposed recommendations to modify it, to make, to improve it, the only other item that you're looking at is these specific lots, so that you know, it's a given, that you know where they, they could go. And the last thing I'll say is, and I may have mentioned it last time, but I think, I think the, I think the question brought up, Cal, about, you know, why pick lots, why understand where, where these are going? When, the example I used is the cell towers, when those came into, into being, there was no regulations to regulate them. Towns brought in, many towns brought in the actual companies that were trying to put them in, and they found the locations where they needed to go. So when they passed those ordinances, they actually specified lot, platinum lots right in those ordinances. These are where they want those cell towers. So it, it has been done in the past, and I think everybody walked away feeling pretty comfortable with that because there was some certainty to it. And I think that was part of what precipitated going from the big round circle of one hundred twenty-nine possible lots down to the fifteen. So there is some certainty to understand where these could go in these zones. And lastly, you know, you have already authorized these types of arrays in your residential zones, this is making some changes to that, but that's already been looked at. And, you know, frankly, when we write ordinances, and I've done my share of them, we sometimes don't know the full impact on both the town and those that are applying under those ordinances until people start to try to do them. And so what you have here is a little bit of reaction to looking at an ordinance and then trying to figure out, do we need to tweak it, do we need to amend it, do we need to make it better, what are the issues with it? So, so when you do, when you write ordinances, you don't always know what the results can be. So you have an opportunity with this amendment here to make some improvements to that ordinance. And I'd be certainly happy to answer any questions the council has had.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Lombardi?
I have a comment. First of all, you've, you've, you've come to us, a town, as a developer, and you've offered rewrites to our current solar ordinance. And you just spoke to, to us about the fact that when an ordinance is written, it might not always do exactly what you want or cover issues exactly the way they should be, which is what I understand our planning board has discovered since that solar ordinance was put into place. And I just want you to know, because I'm not sure you do, and I want the people here to know, that last Thursday night, we sat with the planning board because they had proposed yet another alternative solar ordinance, which does allow for a variety of different sizes of solar arrays, something the previous ordinances or proposals did not include. And I commend the, the planning board for listening to the concerns that have been expressed, understanding that the ordinance that was adopted a couple of years or three ago was not quite what we needed, and they are trying to create something that we should have. And what I hear is that your, your development company has come to the town and decided what we should have in our ordinance, and that process is one that I find personally objectionable.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to respond to that point. I, I think Mr. Lombardo said, and, and actuality is, we make ordinances, county councils make ordinances, in hopes that they can be followed and they follow the intent that's actually behind the ordinance, your intent, your legislative intent to make that ordinance. And you can create ordinances, which may sound very good on paper, but actually do two things. They're a deterrent to development and they're a prohibition to development. What we're doing is, we're, we're the actual enactor, if you will. We are the practicality of it. We come in and determine, can we, can a project be built based on the parameters that are described by the town? And if certain parameters are such that they're unreasonable, then you've created an ordinance that is essentially useless because there will be no development that can be undertaken under that ordinance because either the restrictions are so restrictive and the constraints are such that they're impractical in the sense of development and, and also financing. So an ordinance has to strike a balance between safety and practicality. And it is not unusual for a developer to make recommendations and to make revisions to the ordinance, because after all, the developer is the party that's actually out in the field, if you will, implementing and following and effectuating the development. So you have a role to actually create the legislation. We have a role to actually go out and practice that legislation, to put it into action, to make your words turn into actual construction equipment. So it's got to be a fair balance. And this is exactly what this process is doing. It's transparent and it's creating that balance. We're telling you, from a, from a developer's perspective, who's actually going to go and hire equipment, get financing, put the risk in play to create something that you intend to create, which is solar array, and we're telling you which provisions we think are problematic, which provisions we think are fair and reasonable, and leaving the decision up to you to exercise your legislative mandate and to exercise your legislative intent.
Would that have any questions to Mr. Lombardo, unless there's any questions that other council members may have? Joe, you had an opportunity to review the recommendation. The, the, the planning board, in addition to following the mandates of forty-five, twenty-four, fifty-two, which is to find that the proposal is either consistent or inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, in doing so, they also made some legal conclusions, if you will, and one of which is they determined or questioned whether or not this proposal would create spot zoning. In your opinion, is this proposal cautionary to be spot zoning?
Well, now you bring up an interesting question. I think there's always been a lot of debate, even in the planning profession, about what, what that actually constitutes. And I think they put some definitions in, in their recommendation to you. The way I, I've always looked at it is, is putting a totally incongruous use in the middle of another use. In this instance, you know, these are specific lot, platinum lots, without question, but you've already determined that, that they, that they can be in those zoning districts. So I don't, I don't see it that way. If, if it was restricted to just one zone, and now you're going to place them in ten or fifteen lots in a completely different zone, that, that's a different discussion.
So you agree that the zone, the RU three zoning designation, the RU four zoning designation has not changed?
Correct.
How does he get to ask questions?
I don't get this.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Mr. Lombardo, you also had an opportunity to review the comment in regards to whether or not the proposal did not follow statutory procedure, and the comment from the planning board was that forty-five, twenty-three, sixty-one, which is the presence of approval, was not followed in this instance. In your opinion, as a, as a land use consultant, was it necessary to follow forty-five, twenty-three, sixty-one?
No. You know, in, in essence, the, any petitioner can come before the council and, and request this change of zoning, be it a, a map change or a text change, without having a specific project that they're in the process of going through planning board approval. In the instance where they have a specific project and they're going forward simultaneously, yes, but in other instances, I've worked on projects where we just present zoning text amendments without an actual project. So you can do that, at least in my opinion, as a planner.
And, and do you agree that this is not a project-specific proposal?
At, at this moment, it's not a project-specific proposal.
And, and Mr. President, one, one final question. Do you agree that, you, you started your, your comments by distinguishing between a text amendment and a zone change? In conjunction with that, do you view this as being a general amendment to, to the zoning ordinance as opposed to a specific amendment to the zoning ordinance?
Well, it's, it's really quite specific. It's, it's, it's to the, the use table very specifically, with specific provisions along that line. And then the, the actual text amendments are, are very specific changes to the original text of that ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, but I have to ask another question about text amendments. And here's my question. You say it's not a map change, and yet I know because I sat at a planning board meeting, because I wanted to hear the machinations of the board and how they addressed this, and, and three members of the board, or if not four, three members were advised by legal counsel to recuse themselves because they live in proximity to one of the fifteen parcels. So I don't understand if it's just a text change. Apparently, the, the text affects that property next to them and apparently might make them subject to something that, that they don't think might be appropriate, but the special use permit won't be available to them. So please respond to that for the purposes of the hearing.
Mr. President, to the chair, you're correct. There were, there were, I believe, three zoning, three planning board members who accused themselves, but the recusal wasn't based on any opinion that they received from around Ethics Commission, but rather they viewed that since they were abutters to some of these properties or within close proximity, they wanted to eliminate the appearance of impropriety, so they proposed to recuse themselves. We did not ask them to recuse themselves. We were indifferent towards it. If they wish to participate, we don't see an issue.
Excuse me, I never said you did. Please stop, stop rewording and twisting around. I said their legal counsel. I, I object to you telling me what I've said. That is not what I said.
That's not what I, I apologize if you believe that that's what I said, that you said. I did not. Rather, what I simply said was to, was to clarify the situation before the planning board, which I think is more than fair and adequate. Simply put, there was no request on our part for anyone to recuse themselves. I think that they exercised their proper judgment to determine whether or not an appearance of impropriety was, was necessary. Look, I feel unfortunate that this seems to be in an adversary position, because it simply isn't. We're here proposing a, a, a text amendment, as we said, to your zoning ordinance, and we're allowing you to exercise your legislative ability to determine whether you believe it's proper for the town.
Just to follow up with your question, a map change would have required an actual map to be included with, with the advertising. Not changing the actual zoning on any of those lots. What you're doing is you're changing the use table and specifying that on specific platinum lots, those uses are permitted. You're not changing the zone, so it's not a zoning map change. That's the simple answer that I can give you. I understand your question for that. The simple answer is, if it was a map change, you would be changing it. Any other councilors? Thank you.
Mr. President, unless there's any other comments, that essentially concludes what we want to provide you, and we would be available for any additional questions that anybody would have.
Okay. What we're going to do is, we're going to start taking public comment. I've got two lists here, people signed, one in support and one opposed. What we'll do is, we'll alternate back and forth, we'll take one from the opposed and the next person will take from the support. I ask when you come up to speak to state your full name and your address for the record, please. And with that, I'll start with the first one, and I really can't read the writing on this one, Calvin. Can you make that one out?
It's a, it's a Mark.
It's me.
It's someone.
Lyles.
Okay.
Sorry.
It was in English. Sorry.
Thank you for letting me speak. Can you guys hear me? My name is Dr. Mark Lyles. My address is eighty-six Hopkins Hill Road. I'm also here at the behest of Mr. Everett Peck, who is my neighbor, who owns four parcels on these, on this map, who said, and I need to quote this, "There's no way in hell they're going to put solar panels on my property." He obviously had no clue that any, a lot of this stuff was going on, or that, that, that we were having this meeting tonight, that I, that's what he told me. I personally would not have known of this meeting tonight, except for this letter I got from San Francisco, from an NRG, wanting to lease my property that's adjacent to him. They sent me a dollar. I guess this is for you guys. I didn't need it. But here's, here's the thing that bothers me. Four parcels, one's across my street, one butts my property, one's catty corner to my thing, to, to my road, to my property, and we had no idea that this was going on. I think that was an injustice to those property owners that may have an effect of their property values. And for a lot of people in Exeter, why we moved to Exeter, why we love Exeter, and not be informed that this was all going on. The text change of it is legal mumbo jumbo. It just means that they get to, to go directly to the, to the person and start negotiating. One of the reasons I, I came up to tell you this is I was approached about a year and a half ago to work with another solar company that's buying land all over New England. I'm retired Navy captain. I did advanced technology development for the Navy and worked with the Navy in that. I sit on NASA panels, I sit on VA panels, I sit on Department of Defense panels. So I was brought in to look at technology development. What the other solar companies are doing is they're just going out and buying the land where they can get it, clearcutting it, and then putting solar panels up. That ruins that, that land forever, plus everything around it, the value just goes right down. As, as panel members, I would beseech you to look at the technology that's available right now and the potential technology that's going to be in five, ten, fifteen, twenty-five years. I've seen it. What they're proposing to pay you is a farce. What they're proposing to pay me to lease my land and destroy the value of my property and the wildlife and everything that I've spent so much time and effort to develop, and all the trees I've planted and all the pollinators I planted and everything I worked for, from the state of Rhode Island, from forest management all the way up to, to wildlife development, it throws it all down the tubes. So please take in consideration why most of us here live in Exeter and why So please take in consideration why most of us here live in Exeter and why we love Exeter, and please don't change it into something else. Thank you for your time.
Gina Thurn, 555 Gardner Road, Exeter, Rhode Island. As I have listened to commentary on this proposed solar ordinance zoning change over the last several months, I'm reminded of a scene from Disney's Beauty and the Beast. The scene where Gaston holds up the magic mirror to show the crowd the evil beast as he riles them up and convinces them of the horrors that befall them if they do not kill the beast. Gaston engages in fear mongering. He presents just enough information to play on the crowd's fears without ever showing the other side. I've seen that same situation occur here. And I've also seen a lot of facts left out of the picture. The town of Exeter has had a solar ordinance on its books since December 7, 2015, according to your minutes. An ordinance that was drafted by our current town planner, Ms. Sweet, and reviewed by the planning board and given full support. The planning board that consisted of almost all of the same current members. The ordinance was put up for public hearing, was announced to the public. According to the minutes, there was no opposition at that point in time. It was voted on by the acting council. That included Mr. Morrissey, Mr. McGovern, Mr. Ellis, Mr. Patterson, and Ms. Hicks, and received unanimous approval. Mr. Patterson recusing himself because he had been approached by a solar company at the time. The ordinance that you put on the books permits both residential and utility-scale solar arrays in the town of Exeter. Changing the zoning matrix on this ordinance does not remove, negate, or change the role of the planning board, the zoning board, the town planner, the zoning or building inspectors in their roles as nonpartisan and unbiased people in charge of reviewing and approving or denying proposed solar development based on whether or not they meet your criteria, all of your criteria. The current ordinance already limits lot coverage to 15% in residential zones as per your own zoning code. In essence, it limits solar to less than that when you take into account houses, garages, sheds, gazebos, et cetera, on that property. It means that the maximum build-out on a 100-acre parcel is less than 15 acres, not the 100 acres of clearcutting the forest that people have been saying. And it prevents all future development of that parcel into houses or anything else unless that solar array is removed, which means the remaining 85 acres of that parcel remains open space. The current ordinance already limits clearcutting of trees, soil grading, and soil removal to minimize environmental impact. It already addresses screening and visual impact of the solar array. In short, you guys did a good job the first time around. Any statements to the contrary of that are very misleading and are fear mongering. In my opinion, the zoning change enhances the current ordinance and helps keep valuable open space open so that it's not sold for house lots. I believe it should pass. If anything, I don't think it goes far enough. For once, Mr. Ellis, I agree with you. I think it should be applied to the whole town, not just a certain six-mile radius. And the reason I say that is because while the infrastructure and planned upgrades to the electric grid are planned within the six-mile radius of the Lafayette Substation, that's today, renewable energy is where the future is going. We're moving away from gas and coal-fired power plants and moving towards renewable energy. And I believe that in the future, more upgrades will be made to the infrastructure somewhere by other companies. And we should put ourselves in a position as a town to capitalize on that by not limiting this to just a tiny area. I'd also like to make two other points. The developer, heard about the developer, the developer's trying to rewrite the town ordinances, the developer's trying to rule our town. It's done nothing more than what it's been asked to do by the landowners he represents. He would have no land to put solar arrays on if the landowners that own those parcels didn't say, "This is something that would benefit us. This is something that would help keep us viable in this town." Regardless of whether or not green development or any other developer asks to put up solar arrays, the answer would be no if the landowner says no. They own the land, not green development. This is not about a developer taking over our town. It's about the rights of current landowners, residents and taxpayers of this land, of this town, to use their land as they see fit. They bought the land, they worked the land, and they paid the taxes on the land. They should have a say in how their land is used. For those who've accused my husband and myself of taking payoffs because we supported these changes, we have received nothing. We're not speaking out because we were paid to, but rather because we believe in property rights for all residents of this town. We have no right to dictate what you should do on your land, nor do we feel you have a right to dictate what we should do on ours. If the coin were flipped, we would fight for you too, because it's the right thing to do. This is about community, helping community, and being a community instead of the us versus them and the haves versus the have-nots. There is compromise to be found here for the sake of everyone in this town. I truly hope that compromise can be found without sending this entire debate down the tubes with contentious litigation. By the time this issue could work its way through the courts, many of those involved won't be here. Some because they were truly forced to cash out or starve, some because they decided this wasn't the community that they thought it was and moved on, and some by attrition. I don't know about you, but I would rather work to find a compromise that we can all live with than have someone's death on my hands because I was too busy saying not in my backyard. Thank you.
Next, Armin Cordoloso.
As I read the request for a change in the zoning ordinance and use table, I see a request to change the zoning use table from a no in RU3 zoning to a yes, and change the special use permit in RU4 to a yes. I do not see a request to clearcut forests and strip land. After reading the cover letter included with the proposed text change to the current solar ordinance, I questioned if these changes were written by the applicant, but these changes are one of the many proposed changes that have gone back and forth between this council and the planning board. Most of the proposed changes, with the exception of 11.1.A-D7, 11.1.B-D7, and 11.1.E, are minor changes to the current zoning ordinance, many of which make the ordinance easier to understand. 11.1.B-E is a new section that actually adds additional requirements when submitting an application for special use permit. Current ordinance enacted over two years ago, as well as proposed section, both require utility-scale solar goes through major land development, which requires notification of a budding landowners. They must meet state and local drainage erosion requirements, limits clearcutting of natural vegetation, requires landscape screening. The zoning and planning boards have set a precedent for maximum lot coverage with previously approved projects. Systems that have already been installed have been held to the maximum build-out of the zone where they are located. For residential, this is 15%. The requested change to the zoning use table does not open our town to clearcutting of forests. It does not subject our town to wall-to-wall solar panels. It does give landowners with large tracts of land in RU3 zoning the ability to have utility-scale solar as an option on part of their land. It also lets landowners with large tracts of land in RU4 zoning apply for utility-scale solar with one less hurdle. The benefit to these landowners will be the ability to have a supplemental income to help pay their property taxes. Property taxes that are based not on current use but based on development potential permitted by zoning, a development potential that was, that these landowners did not ask for. While having up to 15% of this farmland put into solar isn't perfect, the ability for perfect was lost when property tax was based on development potential rather than use. We now need to find the next best way. Having 15% of this land put into solar for 25 years is better than 15% of this land and houses permanently. I also feel the opportunity for utility-scale solar would benefit landowners with large tracts of land in RE2, as well as all large tracts of land in RU3 and RU4, not just those within the six-mile radius of the Lafayette Substation. Please pass this request with the directional changes to all utility-scale solar in RE2 in all of Exeter. One additional thing that I put into that, two months ago, when this proposal was about to come to the floor for hearing, one of the major points that I heard the planning board use to find it inconsistent with the comprehensive plan was that it encompassed so much land, so many lots, and that was one of the points they used to say it shouldn't be going forward. Two months later, applicant has brought it down to 15 lots, and the argument is, well, it's so, defining just so many certain little lots, it's not fair to everybody. It's not consistent because of that. Which do we want? Or is this just something to nitpick to stop it? Thank you.
Next, Tom McMillan.
Tom McMillan, Cottlestone Hill Road in Exeter. I'd like to urge council to reject this developer's proposed language. We may quarrel whether it's spot zoning or not, but we've got erratically cited parcels chosen solely for the profit at the expense of the present and long-term interests of the town of Exeter. As we all know, the solar pendulum has swung very rapidly, and it's swung way beyond center. We've gone way beyond the center point of what's good for all. Industrial and/or utility-scale developments are being proposed everywhere. We're being faced with an onslaught of these new operators seeking to create for themselves a financial golden goose by preempting the town's responsibility for updating its ordinances as they are required to do. Surrender of the council's responsibility of process self to government to an extremely aggressive commercial function would be an unthinkable abandonment of the responsibilities of our council. We've all taken oaths to uphold and act in the best interest of our town and in the best interest of everyone who lives here. Solar seems to be a wash in money. It's been on the screen here tonight. That money has to come from the taxpayers as a subsidy and from the ratepayers. It seems to be that the developers should be required to locate themselves where the town prefers, where the town feels it's appropriate, and then fund their own distribution systems. There's plenty of money to offer to the towns. Let them put up their own distribution system rather than destroying the residential areas simply because there's a substation and a three-phase line somewhere nearby. Put a new one up if it's that good. Finally, I think public buildings should have solar on their roofs before we go doing these forest cut downs and so on. I would finally urge very, very clearly that the special use permit be retained. Don't take that away from the zoning board. Don't take away the public's only right as an abutter to come and appear before the board with their concerns and issues. The zoning board is the one body that's tasked with protecting the property values of the residents. Planning board can't rule on those kinds of issues. So I would, again, urge you not to adopt these proposed regulations from the developer.
Next is Ted Natale.
I seem to be a little confused as to what side is going where and what side's going the other way. I myself, I'm in favor of solar. I've been in favor of it for years. And when I listen to all of this, what these people are presenting to do sounds to be good to me. They're going to put up the solar panels if it's in a residential neighborhood. They're going to surround the whole thing so that it's out of sight and out of mind. There's going to be revenue coming in, and there's not going to end up with a lot more kids in the school system that's just killing us going along. I guess that it's the not my backyard theory that we're looking at. If you're, most of the people, I guess, and I'm going to listen to the rest of the people, what they have to say, is that their property value is going to go down. Well, if that's the case, boy, come put one of those next to me. I'd love to see my taxes go down. They just jacked my house up by $50,000. Thank you.
Next is Hal Blair.
I'm impressed.
I believe it's Amy Elstam. Is that correct?
My name, hello. My name is Ann Stamm.
Speak just a little closer. The lights are making you back there, please.
My name is Ann Stamm of Stamm Farms. I thank you for graciously listening to me as I did speak to the majority of you at the May meeting, but just would like to more fully communicate to those here. I am a full-time farmer and a landowner in Exeter. I, along with our children, and most certainly my husband and my in-laws, Bill and Carol, are steadfast stewards of land that we are intricately linked to here in the town of Exeter. For over four decades, the Stamm family has poured our hearts, our souls, and our bodies into providing our communities with the very tangible fruits of what we do and of our labor, whether it is the open space, our local pumpkins, or our iconic sweet corn. Bill and I cherish our hopes and dreams to continue with this chosen way of life, this way that we have chosen, this intense commitment to agriculture in order to nurture a legacy of farming that we would like to pass on to our children, our grandchildren, and future generations for the betterment of the town of Exeter. This proposed zoning amendment allows for that reality. Alternative energy options will allow farmers such as ourselves to continue farming. It's that simple. Farming is a commitment that doesn't typically yield high financial benefits, yet we still do it. Added income will be a crucial bridge between a generation ready to retire and future hopes and dreams of being viable contributing members to this sustainably responsibly. responsible community. Additionally, this amendment is consistent with Exeter's comprehensive plan, and it does allow for the benefits of renewable energy. I, I feel very strongly against the fear-gripped voices that are speaking against this amendment. I feel very strongly that it's a form of elitism. I, I am very upset by the tactics of fear-mongering, false representation, really a desire to pickle community into a personal vision of a antiquated unsustainable community in town. I, I believe that the result of this will cripple all of us. And at stake, as has been mentioned here already tonight, is control over property rights. And it's not that anyone is forcing someone else to put solar on their property or to change what they've invested and what they love about their property and their home and their dreams and their labors. We farmers understand property rights. We pour our lives into stewardship of our resources in order to provide irreplaceable local food, fiber, agricultural education, and energy, and homes for our families, and all of it for future generations. But we must have the ability to do so and have the ability to continue farming with tools such as renewable energy. Please, please consider agriculture and agricultural families here in the town of Exeter. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak here tonight. I'm Bill Stamped III, and you just heard my wife. We're, she addressed you previously. I'm proud to be a farmer and a businessperson and a landowner in the town of Exeter and Richmond and Cranston, other places in the state also. I've always been proud of being a farmer. I was raised in a farming family and spent my entire childhood alongside my parents for the goal of farm, of the farm and the independent lifestyle of farming. Those have always been my goals. I truly know that I'm blessed to have spent my life working the soil, to pay for that soil, to be a responsible steward of that soil and all its supports. My commitment to agriculture, whether through Farm Bureau or numerous other agricultural organizations, is a living example of my understanding of the importance of land resources within a community. Ultimately, I'm still farming because I'm committed to continuing this life of stewardship and personal investment into agricultural land and livelihood. And I'm proud to say, our model of using land, our model of stewardship and using land, the land resource, is much more sustainable than other alternatives. There are endless challenges to this desired life path of ours: property taxes, estate taxes, capital gains, asset and capital depletion, depletion, excuse me, oppressive and never-ending regulations from multiple levels of bureaucracy, changing markets, price deflation, our urban and rural neighbors, subsidized competition, the list goes on. Truthfully, most farmers have to obtain outside supplemental income to survive and maintain their love and commitment to agriculture. That is why we must look forward to a future that includes us working together to meet these challenges. Agriculture must have the flexibility to change and to provide with opportunities for income to support our families such as ancillary uses, venues of agricultural education, and alternative energy production. They must be tools that follow the principles of sound business practices that recognize our country's constitutional premise, not measuring the control that change our community, not measures of control that change our communities into pre-socialist entities that result in the loss of property rights and the ability to pursue our forefathers' visions. Our land is our home, our workplace, our financial foundation, our retirement, our insurance, our research and development capital. The future of our business, our very lifeblood, you cannot expect farms to prosper through measures of control and loss of freedom. We are the foundation of communities such as Exeter with the potential and reality of producing jobs, related agribusiness, and prosperity through modern-day realities of farming practices. We are the connective tissue between the soil and local food, ag education, fiber, fuel, and energy to the residents of Exeter in our state. As elders and statesperson to our communities, I pray that you will consider carefully, and please vote for the proposed amendment. As this forward-thinking on the use of these resources will provide economic stability to landholders, it will be physically prudent to the town, in-town management, and will help provide for the security of Exeter's farmers and the town's futures. Thank you, folks.
Next is Kelly Morris.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Kelly Morris. I'm an attorney. I'm here representing Frank D. Gregorio as well as other residents in town. I also want to let you know that I am also a land use planner, having worked as the planning director in Cumberland for several years. I also do what Mr. Lombardo does, appear before boards like yours, to consult on planning issues. So the first thing that I think that is the most important thing is the notice issue. This is clearly a map change. The state law and your own zoning ordinance at section 1-5 requires additional notice, not just newspaper notice, but additional notice to people who reside within 200 feet when the proposed amendment includes, quote, "a specific change in a zoning district map" but does not affect districts generally. This amendment affects 15 specifically designated lots on your zoning map, effectively creating an overlay zoning district. I would call it your solar overlay zoning district, just like you have a planned village overlay district. It's the same thing. Any, if someone wanted to change their property to be in the planned village overlay district, they would have to provide notice to people within 200 feet, like Dr. Lyle and his neighbor. All of those people who surround these properties have been affected by their inability to come here and speak to you and give you their concerns. And that is not what the state enabling statute requires and not what your own zoning ordinance requires. A general zone change, just as an example, that only requires newspaper notice, which is what you gave, would be changing the setback in the RU3 zoning district or even allowing solar use in the RU3 zoning district for all properties. But when the town selects particular parcels in a zoning district but not others, this is clearly a zone change to a district map, what I just read to you, straight out of the state law, and that requires notice to abutters. So even Mr. Lombardo, when he was up here testifying, when Mr. Mancini asked him if this was specific or general, Mr. Lombardo's extended response was that it was a specific rather than general zone change. So right there, this is a jurisdictional prerequisite. You must give notice to people within 200 feet of all of these properties before you may rule on this issue. Then there's the precedence of approvals that has been brought up by others tonight. The Exeter Land Development Subdivision Regulations at section 9-5 and state law requires that where an applicant requires both planning board approval and council approval for a zone change or a zoning map change, the applicant must first obtain the advisory opinion on the zone change from the planning board as well as conditional planning board approval for its first stage of approval, master plan, then obtain the conditional zone change from you, and then proceed with the other stages of approval. This is both in the state law and your ordinance. We all know what this proposal is. It's solar development where 15 lots are affected. In fact, Ms. Coffinter tonight told you that these projects will, are required to go through this process, but they've somehow chosen to come here first without going to the planning board where notice would have been given to abutters and there would have been a lot more public participation. So there's actually three planning board applications pending on three of the lots listed in the zoning ordinance. One for 10 Rod Road, which is called WED Ridge, one for Trips Corner Road, and one for 9910 Rod Road. So why hasn't the developer gone forward with those master plan applications before coming to you for this zone change? It's not allowed by law. Also, the most important analysis is the consistency with the comprehensive plan. I did read through the planning board's recommendation, which was very well-written, but I think the most important thing when you're making a land use decision is to look at the future land use map. The future land use map looks at what the town intends for all of the parcels in town to be going in the future. The, any zone change has to be consistent with that map. Your future land use map clearly shows that these particular areas are designated as either low-density, environmental, medium-low-density, or open space. There's nothing showing on any of these parcels that it would be either industrial or commercial or anything that would kind of support a solar use. So, and the other thing that I noticed is, again, the planning board did a fantastic job, but what they didn't say in their recommendation is that there's nothing in the comprehensive plan that talks about either solar or renewable energy. And Mr. Lombardo, I heard his testimony tonight, he kept referring to the state guide plan, and that's all well and good, but your decision has to be consistent with your local comprehensive plan. It doesn't matter that it was adopted in 2003. That is your comprehensive plan. So this decision has to be consistent with that and not with the state guide plan. The other thing that I heard Mr. Mancini saying is that since you already approved a solar amendment, that it's necessarily per se consistent? Well, no, that was a zone change that was made by this council. It wasn't appealed. No one challenged it. So we don't know if that's consistent. I would actually say it's not consistent, but nobody's appealed that, so we don't know. A court hasn't ruled on that. The other thing people have talked about is spot zoning, and I can tell you that the Rhode Island Supreme Court has defined spot zoning as an action by a zoning authority which gives to a single lot or a small area privileges which are not extended to other land in the vicinity. Importantly, the crucial test for determining whether a zoning ordinance amendment constitutes illegal spot zoning depends on whether its enactment violates a municipality's comprehensive plan, which is what we've been talking about. Certainly, there is valid spot zoning and invalid spot zoning, but in this case, the zone change is clearly invalid because this zone change would give privileges to the small area that is not extended to other land in the area, as Councilman Ellis had said earlier. It's only for 15 lots in RU3 and RU4 and not the rest of the lots, and it is not consistent with the comprehensive plan. I would challenge anyone here to pick out any provision in your comprehensive plan that actually supports this ordinance. There is nothing in it. From a practical perspective, I also understand that there's been assurances that you would get payment in lieu of taxes, a scholarship fund, and that Exeter residents are giving priority for jobs. If you are going to make a decision on this tonight, I would be very careful. Once this is adopted, that's it. This use will be permitted by right. You should have agreements in place before you, before you were to approve this ordinance. And that's all I have. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any other questions?
I have questions.
All right, ahead, Frank.
What was your name again, ma'am?
Kelly Morris.
Kelly Morris. So I direct this question to you as well as the town planner. Ms. Sweet, do you agree with the testimony of this attorney?
The planning board's recommendation raised the issue of spot zoning. The planning board's recommendation raised the issue of precedence of approvals, and I, we did not discuss this at the planning board level, but I have had concerns all along that this is definitely a map change and not a text change.
Okay, thank you. One other question, if I may. Ms. Sweet, so the allegation was made on several different, several different times that this was improperly advertised. Would you agree with that?
I would agree that this is definitely a map change and it was not advertised.
That wasn't the question I asked you. I asked you, do you agree with the testimony that this attorney just gave that this hearing or the lack thereof was improperly advertised?
I can't, I'm not a lawyer, so I can't.
Okay, well, I guess my question is this then. If this attorney alleges that it was not advertised properly, and she's representing Mr. D. Gregorio, not only as a citizen, but he's also a member of the planning board, why is it that you, as town planner, did not advise the town council in your recommendation that this was properly, not properly advertised?
I'm not an attorney.
I didn't say it wasn't properly advertised.
Yes, you did, on several different occasions. You said that there was not proper notice given.
Noticed, correct. Two different things. So there was an advertisement in the paper, which should have included a zoning map, absolutely, but the more important issue was that people within 200 feet of each property were not notified. So there's a distinction between an advertisement and a notification to abutters. I hope that makes it clear.
Well, I guess what I'm confused about is, is that this has been going on since October of last year. So anybody that has a concern about this issue was here two months ago or they're here tonight. Would you, would you not agree with that?
I was here two months ago, and I heard people complaining about the notice issue. I, I've known about this notice issue for a long time, and I, I believe the council and the solicitor and the planning solicitor is all aware of this notice issue. This has been a source of debate for at least as long as I've been involved.
Well, I'm not a planning expert, just as Mr. Sweet is not an attorney, but I think it has been said by Mr. Mancini that major land development would include that abutters would be notified. Is that incorrect?
Yes, they will be notified.
Okay.
Well, if I can complete my, my answer. The way Mr. Mancini is proceeding, he's asking you to approve a zone change without the proper input from the public, i.e. without the input of people who are gonna be most directly affected. And he's asking you to wait until the deal is done, and I don't mean the deal in a negative way, but until the zoning ordinance is adopted, and then those people will get notified of a by-right development. And if I can expand, you know, they talked about landscaping, Mr. Lombardo talked about the planning board having jurisdiction of landscaping. What I read in the zoning ordinance is that landscaping is very vague, and if I'm representing the developer, they don't need to give you any landscaping. So once this is done by this body, it's, it's almost a free-for-all for the developer because the planning board did not have the ability to obtain the proper input and do their work. That's the problem with this process.
I'm not trying to instigate a debate between you and Mr. Mancini, but Mr. Mancini, if, if the president and the council will allow, could Mr. Mancini possibly shed some light on this attorney's opinion, please? on this attorney's opinion, please, for the benefit of the council?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through the, excuse me, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through Mr. Patterson. We have some significant concerns based on what I'm just hearing. So Ms. Morris just testified to you that she's known about a notice deficiency for quite some time. She indicated that she represents Mr. Di Gregorio. Mr. Di Gregorio has been the council, I'm sorry, has been the Planning Board member who's reviewed this project since it was first initiated back in October. Ms. Morris indicated that there's been some scudder and some debate with regards to whether our notice was properly done. Ms. Sweet also said that she has some concerns with regards to notice. The thing that is most void is that the applicant has never been informed that there's been a deficiency in notice, that the applicant was never informed whether or not this was a zone change or a change to the zoning map. The applicant is following in good faith, it's abiding by the state statute as it's interpreting it, it's submitting its application to the town council, it's submitting its application to the Planning Board, it's having its application reviewed by town council solicitor, it's having its application reviewed by the Planning Board Solicitor. Planning Board Solicitor has sat at more than several meetings where the issue of the proposal has been addressed. Not once has the issue of notice deficiency been brought up to the applicant. So that brings a significant question with regards to due process. As you know, all of these ordinances and all of these statutes have to comport with our Rhode Island Constitution, and the Constitution requires substantive and procedural due process. Substantive procedural due process goes to whether something is shocking, and procedural due process goes to whether or not something follows a procedure that is transparent and open so that an applicant can know what to do and when to do it. Here, what's shocking is you have a Planning Board member represented by legal counsel prior to even recusing themselves, knowing that there's a potential deficiency in notice, but never letting anybody know specifically the applicant that there is this notice deficiency. Then bringing the notice deficiency up at the 11th hour, asking that the council not have, essentially what they're saying is this is an illegal meeting. Now, they made a distinction between advertisement and notice, and they're correct, the statute does make a distinction between advertising. First, you have to advertise for three consecutive weeks, which the town has done, and if there's a specific change to the ordinance, then the advertisement has to be three consecutive weeks by way of a newspaper filing, and then a notice to a Butters. The notice to a Butters depends on what the classification of the ordinance. Guess who makes that classification? It's not the applicant, it's the Planning Board, it's the town council. And here, all along, they've sat in their bad pocket and not indicated anything to the applicant. Moreover, the Planning Board has gone well and above what 4523, I'm sorry, 452452 allows them to do. They have two objectives. One is to determine consistency with the comprehensive plan, second is to determine whether or not this consistency with the zoning ordinance is in total. What they've done here is they've made a determination that if there's inconsistency with the comprehensive plan, then they've gone and made legal conclusions without referring any or obtaining any type of legal advice, which we argue as an attorney who represents a developer, I say that's very scary and very wrong for the town because they're not in the, Ms. Sweet said it right, she's not a lawyer. So those arguments, whether as far as notice deficiency, as far as spot zoning, as far as whether or not the presence of approval, 452361, are applicable, come from your town solicitor, and most specifically, the solicitor which advises councils and sits at the Planning Board meetings. None of the meetings that we attended to had the solicitor ever mention spot zoning, never mentioned notice deficiency, nor was there ever a mention that the process is incomplete or the process has not begun correctly. And finally, there's this argument with regards to whether or not the presence of approval is applicable, and that's 452361. And I apologize for throwing to you a lot of statistics and a lot of laws, but they're applying, they're important, because they're being brought up, and they're being brought up in an inappropriate manner, in our opinion. But when you read specifically 452361, it talks about proposed projects. We're not talking about a proposed project. We're not giving you any specifics with regards to what the project is. What we're doing is establishing a process by which a proposed project can then go and be approved. Once the process is created, then the project can be submitted. The proposal to amend a zoning, or I'm sorry, the proposal to create a zone change or the proposal to amend the text of an existing ordinance can be done at any time, and it can be done either in conjunction with a proposed project or it can be done outside of making a specific request for a project. What's happening here is that there is no proposed project, therefore 452361 is not applicable. What we're doing is creating a process and giving the process a procedure, and that is what we're seeking here, nothing more and nothing less. With regards to spot zoning, I think that there is, you know, the Supreme Court once said it best, you'll know it when you see it. Well, the Supreme Court has had multiple definitions as to spot zoning. What we're saying here, in our opinion, is this is not spot zoning, we're not creating different classes of rights. This is not a change to the zoning map because we're not changing the requirements of the underlying district. What we're doing is we're amending an existing ordinance that you, the town council, in conjunction with the Planning Board, already deemed to be consistent and appropriate for the town to have. And you have already determined that solar arrays, proposals are consistent with the comprehensive plan and part of the process. So, in some, finally, and I know that makes many people happy, but we're very confused as to how a Planning Board member can obtain legal counsel, not recuse himself, and go through a process without letting the applicant know what they're doing. That is very problematic, and I think that's a violation of substantive and procedural due process, and I know my sister will object to it, and rightly so, but I just think that that is a problem, and it's going to get determined by someone else.
Just quickly, very quickly, with regard to this whole notice issue, Mr. Mancini spent a large majority of his presentation tonight talking about whether this is a text change or a map change. He knows there's a notice issue because that's why you want to distinguish as to whether it's a text change or a map change. That's the only reason why you want to distinguish, is the notice issue. So the fact that he, you know, spent, again, a large majority asking Mr. Lombardo if he felt that it was a map change or a text change, he argued legally that it was a text change rather than a map change, that is, everyone's known that there's a notice issue. This is not new. And regarding Mr. Di Gregorio, he has recused from this process, so that's a non-starter. Thank you.
I'd like the chance to answer.
Let's see, let's see, planner, the top planner.
I'd like the chance to finish answering Mr. Morris's question.
Can you speak up for a little closer to my place?
I'd just like the chance to finish answering Mr. Morris's question that seemed to insinuate that I was neglectful in telling the town that there was an issue with notice. I don't create the application, I simply respond to what's presented, and I was presented with a text change. Mr. Mancini, as Ms. Morris said, has spent a tremendous amount of time insisting that this is a text change and not a map change, and if I had raised that issue to him, he would have done the same as he did tonight and insist that this is a text change, and we would still be in the same position we are in, because he is not going to change his application based on the town planner thinking that he's done this incorrectly. I don't write the notice, I don't approve the notice, I have nothing to do with the notice. I simply accept the application that's given to me, present it to the Planning Board, and allow them to make an advisory opinion. It's not my legal obligation to advise the town from a legal point of view.
Through, Mr. President, we have never been advised as to whether this is a text, whether this requires an additional notice. So, and it's very presumptuous. It's very presumptuous to take the position that says, well, had we told you that you needed additional notice, you would have just ignored us and not done the additional notice. No, we would have followed the proper channels and requested of the solicitor for the Planning Board and your town solicitor, hey, what process do you want to employ? What do you believe is the appropriate process? That is why due process is so important, because it forces transparency, it creates consistency and uniformity with regards to the process. Finally, there's disingenuousness with regards to Mr. Di Gregorio having recused himself and not recused himself. He voted on the original recommendation that came before this council. When we were here on April 2nd, prior to April 2nd, the Planning Board had a meeting. Planning Board reviewed our amendment, Planning Board gave you the identical decision except for the legal comments that they've added afterwards. And there's never been a recusal. The first time that the member has recused himself was at the May 29, 2018 meeting. That recusal was the first time. Now we find out that all along, Mr. Di Gregorio is actually represented by council and being given legal advice as to whether something is deficient or inefficient without ever referring that to the board, without ever giving the board knowledge of that, to our knowledge, and certainly never gave the applicant knowledge of his legal representation with regards to this process. That is, that's what we try to follow.
At the April 2nd one, that's when you came before the public hearing started and you amended it.
Correct.
It had the lots specifically counted out at that time.
Correct, and at that point, we took the position in concurrence with your solicitor out of abundance of caution that we felt that, given the change, we would proceed back to the Planning Board for further recommendation. Now, the statute, 45, I'm sorry, 452453, does allow the council to make amendments and changes even though they've been substantially different after advertised, and the reason why I decided not to go forward was because I felt that the statute kind of gives a delineation between the council being able to do it and the applicant being able to do it. And given the fact that it was the applicant that did it, as opposed to the council making significant changes to that ordinance, I thought out of abundance of caution, it would make better sense to go forward and re-advertise and allow for the process to be revisited. Had we been given notice to you by your solicitor that the town takes the position that this ordinance is in fact a change to the district map such that it requires additional notice, you would have sent out notice to 200, to the Butters and 200 feet. It's not, it's not that it's, it's not, we're not hiding. I mean, we've been in this process since October, certainly, there's no secrecy here, and there's no attempt to do anything nefarious or try to push this through quickly, because at the end of the day, your vote does not give us a project. Your vote does not end the story here. Your vote only opens the gates and provides for us to then proceed to go forward and develop a project because we know what the parameters that we need to follow are, for certain.
So, the 15 or 16 lots that is spelled out tonight on that screen, were the ones, two months ago.
They haven't changed.
60 days ago, roughly.
They haven't changed.
Haven't changed, and there was discrepancies then, and out of, like you said, an abundance of caution, we re-advertised.
Correct.
So, for two months.
So, for two months, Mr. Di Gregorio has counseled.
We don't hear this argument till just now.
Correct.
Excuse me, I'm not done, ma'am.
Okay.
So.
I just wanted to correct.
When the Planning Board meets, Ashley, Peter Ruggiero's there, the Town, the Planning Board Solicitor?
Yes, Peter is present in our meetings.
And he's at these meetings and never brought this thing up about text, zone, whatever it is?
Not at the meeting.
Has he ever brought it up?
Not at the meeting.
Has he ever brought it up to you on a phone call? Would this town council be notified of something like this, if it exists?
I don't want to speak for Peter, but I know that his position is that he does not advise the council, and the Planning Board's purview is not whether or not this is legally advertised correctly. And one thing I'd like to clear up that Mr. Mancini stated is that the Planning Board has made legal assumptions and has made legal determinations. That's absolutely not true. If you read the advisory carefully, the Planning Board raised issues and said that they think there may be a problem. We did not make any legal conclusions. We simply brought to your attention that we had some concerns with potentially legal issues. So that was an unfair and incorrect statement.
I just, this notice issue is really, is really important. First of all, John and I are friends, but I got to tell you, if I'm an attorney representing an applicant, I'm going to make sure that we give proper notice. The fact that we're blaming the Planning Board, we're blaming the town council, you're blaming some third-party lawyer, you're blaming, you know, it's jurisdictional, period. If it's a map change, you have to give notice to people within 200 feet of these properties, period. Doesn't matter what Peter Ruggiero said, it doesn't matter what Mr. Maruzak says. I think that Mr. Mancini just agreed that if someone told him to give notice, he would have, because it's a map change. It's a map change. There's a huge problem here with you moving forward on this application, and if they're not in a rush, as Mr. Mancini just said, then give notice, then you correct it.
I'm going to disagree with you for one reason, because it's been continued for two months, and there's an allegation that the notice is wrong, and I've got all these so-called experts that sit on my Planning Board, as they say, and no one says a word.
That's not a, that's not a planning issue, it's a legal issue. So I want to be very clear on that. That is a legal issue that Mr. Mancini should.
That's what I'm saying. I have a Planning Board, I have a solicitor that sits there, and no one says anything? Puts anything to writing to this council?
That's fine. So, Ms. Sweet just said that Mr. Ruggiero advises the Planning Board and not the council. This is a zone change, zoning ordinance change that is in the jurisdiction of the town council. The Planning Board gives a recommendation. The Planning Board members do not opine on legal matters, and the Planning Board Solicitor, apparently, what I just heard, does not advise the town council. So, you know, you can go forward and there'll be an issue in Superior Court. That's what's going to happen, because the notice is clearly defective. Mr. Mancini just agreed that it could be. If someone from the town had told him to give notice to 200, people within 200 feet, he would have, he just said it. It's defective, period.
I'm going to be two minutes, not even one. First off, I don't believe the notice is defective.
No.
We stand by with what we're doing, it's a text change, and that's what it is. I'm sorry, I don't, I'm not saying that the notice is defective, and I'm not agreeing that it's defective. What I'm saying is that the process is defective. What the Planning Board has done here is disingenuous. What's interesting, the Planning Board, and you heard your town planner say, they didn't make any legal recommendation. They told you what legal issues you have, but under 452452, they can't do that, that's not what their purview is. But isn't it also interesting that in their memorandum, they find spot zoning as being a legal issue, they find 452361, the presence of approval being a legal issue, they question the policy, but why did they never, ever put in their memo that potentially notice is defective? I'll tell you why, it's a setup. It's a setup, and it breaches due process. It breaches due process.
Especially a public hearing, not a court of law.
It breaches due process, and there's liability for that. We're not, we're not contending that this meeting is deficient, they've had an opportunity to address it, and notice has been applicable, we stand by our proposal, and we urge you to vote on it.
So, I, again, Mr. Mancini objects to all the legal advice the Planning Board gave to you, but yet doesn't want to follow it either. I've said enough, it's jurisdictional. If this passes, then the Superior Court will handle it, and I will tell you that it's highly likely that this is a problem. I mean, not highly likely, it is, in my opinion.
Counsel for both parties, I want to ask you a question, I'm going to do it in open, rather than calling a recess and speaking to you outside of the purview of the listening of the entire audience. This issue is a novel one. We have two excellent attorneys that have two different opinions of the same language in two different statutes. One, it boils down to whether or not a court someday is going to determine that what's going on here is either a spot zone or a zone change requires a map change, or it's not, it's merely a text. A court could find that it is a map amendment in the clothing of a text, or it could find that it is truly a text amendment and therefore doesn't require this added notice. Either way, it's obvious to me that this is going to end up in court as a pivotal question, maybe the central question. If it's found that the notice is improper, you'll be two years down the line, and you'll be sending out notice again. If it's found that notice is proper, we'll be determining whether we'll be determining whether or not the decision of the board was, is upheld on other reasons. Why not obviate that issue and simply take the time to send out notices to the abutters and avoid that entire situation? We could continue this meeting for the purpose of achieving that notice and thereby open up a clearer way for the applicant and the opponents to challenge the merits rather than the technicalities of the situation. Is that something that's acceptable?
There's two points to that. One is that the, if a court, you're correct. I mean, this ends up before a Superior Court. Superior Court, most likely, if it finds that notice is inadequate, will remain it back for another hearing for notice. So it would be down the line. The reason why I wouldn't agree at this point to extend, at least, I'm not going to counsel my client to do it. If the board wants to extend or wants to give an opportunity and tells us to go and refile, or I'm sorry, tells us to go and notice, that's fine, we'll do it. The reason why I'm not going to offer that is because right now I have a very good due process claim. So, an appeal is going to be faced with a due process claim. Because I think that the process here with the planning board was tainted. It's problematic. I've never seen a planning board member hire legal counsel to represent him and then to cry foul with notice in deficiency of a planning board. Have a planning board planner talk about the fact that they've had discussions with their solicitors. They give a recommendation that has legal points in it, but they leave out the crucial legal point, which is notice. Those are, I can't let my client waive those claims. Those are significant claims.
I understand how you have to represent a client. But if, if in fact, if in fact there is a deficiency, it can be cured right now. And due process can happen at any time. And when it's brought to the attention of this board, isn't it the obligation of this board to see that fairness and due process are followed, not so that one party could have a better shot at taking out the other party at some later day? And that's, that's what I'm trying to do for both sides here. I see it.
I see it from your side here. You're doing, you're representing the council.
I am.
And you're absolutely right.
And the town, I'm the town's solicitor.
Correct, correct. But I simply cannot waive my, I cannot waive legal claims that I believe are good legal claims. I mean, they've actually unrolled themselves before my very eyes. I mean, this is, this is, this is almost.
John, and I'm not, and I hope you both understand, I am not debating that you each have very good arguments.
Right. No, I understand that. Obviously, we have no problem with you giving proper notice to individuals within 200 feet. I just want to comment on this whole due process issue. Again, Mr. Mancini is a very capable land use attorney who's been doing this for as long as I have. And when I looked at this for the first time, it clearly is a map change. He can't blame the town for not going through the proper process of notifying people. So with regard to scaring the town about due process issues and lots of damages, I wouldn't worry about that.
Okay. Mr. President, can I? I'm going to assume that the council wants some position from me on this. Or if not, I'll just keep it to myself. As far as I'm concerned, it doesn't take a whole lot of legal acumen to come to the conclusion that due process can be achieved at any stage and should be achieved at any stage. And if by sending out notice to the abutters, we achieve actually more notice than required, that's better than improper notice. And so, I also think that it's in the best interest of everyone, both sides, to cure this particular procedural question, which could turn into a due process question, which is something no one really needs, by simply sending out the notice. You don't have to agree that it's absolutely under the law required, but it certainly, there certainly is a good faith position that it is. And my suggestion would be, as hard as this is to do, that we continue this hearing for the purpose of providing the two, the notice to the abutters, which will undo the, I think, the procedural arguments, in this case, down the road. And really, in the long run, be cheaper for everyone and more efficient for everyone and well worth the inconvenience that one more continuance will require. So that's my suggestion. It'd be continued for the purpose of notice and that we reconvene to continue this hearing. Again, not to be repetitive, but to allow those who aren't here to come out and voice their opinion if necessary.
Mr. President, I think the solicitor gives us prudent consultation. I recommend that we continue this hearing, unfortunately.
Do you want to make a motion to continue to the next monthly meeting? One question on the next monthly meeting. When is the 4th of July? Is it on a Wednesday? Are we going to have meetings the following, the second Monday of the month?
Meeting is scheduled for the second. You have to make a decision.
So we would have to open the public hearing to vote to move the meeting to the following month and reopen the public hearing to live on this?
No, what you could do, you could continue it to the other.
To the next monthly meeting.
And then, and then if necessary.
Because I was thinking with the 4th of July and that Wednesday, a lot of people, you know, not going to be around. I think it follows one day. Okay. Hang on just a minute, Bob. The week from, the Monday after the 4th would be what? Bob, I'm going to give you two minutes real quick.
All right, it's going to be real quick.
It's past your bedtime.
I come here in April and I seen the picture on the board. And so did all these other people. This guy mailed out 8,000 leaflets to every taxpayer in the town. Now what kind of notification have you got to have? Huh? They don't know this hearing tonight, no.
They sent it to our children.
Yeah, right. You didn't get one, did you?
My son did.
How long are we going to run this anyway now? You know what I mean? It's the second time. I already know where one guy stands. He's against the landowner anyway. I know where he is. You know?
Bob, I know, I know your feelings, but the way it has to be done is with the return receipt mail, certified mail to be legal, so.
He doesn't even have a proposal in front of you. And you're telling him he's got to take care of abutting owners. No. He has to have some kind of a plan before he can notify all them owners that about me or Joe over there. He don't have no program. And furthermore, I got one more statement while I'm up here. The town of Richmond and the town of Exeter lost their court case over the Brown and Mill project, but nobody seemed to know what happened. Well, I know what happened. The Superior Court judge ruled against the town. Why don't we just step up and say that we do not have an adequate, comprehensive plan in place to handle any situation like this? Period. Really? How long we got to argue about this? Till the council changes again, or what? Thank you.
All right, hang on just a minute. We're going to, we're going to make a motion to continue this public hearing. All right, real quick, Patty.
Patricia Ware, 55, School Landowners, vote Exeter. I understand everything that's being said, but can I just ask, if this is a map change, our zoning map shows RU3, RU4. It doesn't show on the map what's allowed in that district. It shows it in the text, in the actual zone, in the zoning booklet. So how is it a map change? How is it, how is it showing on the zoning map that it's a map change? We've had map changes before.
That's my thought too, but the one comment that Jim said.
I understand what he's saying.
You're better off over advertising because of a threat from one individual here to file a suit.
I understand. But I want, I just, can you explain to me? On the zoning map, when it shows RU3, RU4, it does not show what's allowed in that zone until you go to the zoning booklet.
To the zoning matrix.
And then it says RU3 is not allowed, or RU4 is allowed by special use. How is it a map change when it shows on the zoning map, it doesn't show it on there? A map change is.
Pat, part of the problem, part of the problem is that you're heading to court on this. At which point, a judge is going to make a determination. The judge makes a determination that this is nothing more than a proposed zone change or a map specific to a specific parcels in the context of a text change. Then that judge is going to find that the, that the due process requirements of notice were not properly fulfilled. That's one of the arguments, and it's a good argument. Not saying that Mr. Mancini's argument isn't just as valid. Question is whether or not the town and the people are going to go through three years of this as opposed to another couple of months of this.
Okay, I get it. One, understand, everyone understand why, you know, what it shows on the map. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to make an amendment, I mean, a motion to continue this public hearing until Monday, July 9, 2018, for the purposes of, how do you want to advertise it to the abutters? Was that what you would be needing? For the purposes of advertising and notification to the abutters of the proposed properties in this amendment.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just have one piece of discussion. And that regards the questions that have come, comments that have come by the Thirons and others that we, we need to think about compromise. The planning board has proposed a solar, a draft solar, I'm sorry, a draft eight of a solar ordinance which revisits the whole concept of where solar arrays will be permitted. It's on tonight's agenda. I had tried to move that to a public hearing later this month at the last council meeting. It wasn't seconded. I'm hoping that tonight, when we get to that item, you'll see it under unfinished business, that we can also schedule a hearing for the draft eight of the planning board's proposal. Council sat with the planning board last Thursday. It is a, what I call, refreshing, comprehensive approach which does allow solar arrays on properties on which they were previously prohibited. It's worth a hearing. It's worth examining. And I hope that the rest of the council will support moving ahead on a public hearing for that draft eight solar ordinance.
Mr. President, a point of information. With regards to your motion, can you clarify who's going to undertake the advertisement or the notice procedure, as you said?
Well, the, yeah, the requirement is, I believe, the applicant needs to provide the information and the notice.
So the attorney will do it?
Yeah, thank you.
Three seconded.
All in favor?
Let's see, does any, I've heard the discussion.